Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this April 1st regular meeting of the Zion City Council to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here. Item number three is Pledge of Allegiance. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here leading us in prayer this evening is Dave Leopold from Faith Homes.
Heavenly Father, you're our Father. We just ask our Father in heaven, and Lord, we want to say hallowed be your name. We thank you that the most appropriate name for you is Father, and that's the one you gave for us. Hallowed, holy, blessed, worshipped be your name, your character, your presence, Lord. You are so worthy. We want your kingdom to come, Lord. We haven't done so well at setting up our own kingdoms, and we ask for your help. We want your kingdom to come. We want your will to be done on this earth as it is in heaven. Give us today, Heavenly Father, our daily bread. Keep us simple, I pray, Lord. We thank you that you help us to live life one day at a time. And Lord, we really pray that you would forgive us our sins, our trespasses, and that you would help us also to forgive all those who offend or trespass against us. Don't lead us, Heavenly Father, into temptation or into trouble, but deliver us all from evil, Lord, we pray. All of us here in this room, all of us in our city, throughout our country, Lord, deliver us, we pray earnestly, from evil. And Lord, make it real to us, I pray, that yours is the kingdom. Make it real to us, yours is the power, yours is the glory forever, and we thank you.
Item number four is agenda changes. Do any of our commissioners have any agenda changes?
No.
If not, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Fryerson and second by McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries. Item number five is citizen comment. For those, I see that we have some new names on the citizens' comments, so for those that are here, for citizen comments, limit your responses to three minutes, and we might not answer the questions at the time of your comments, but if you'll remain after, if there's someone here that can help with your comments, we will direct you to that person. Debbie Ramsey?
Now, not to be rude, but I'm going to turn my back on you guys and direct this to the audience. Is that all right?
That's fine.
Okay.
We have it all the time.
Excuse me?
We have it happening all the time.
Oh. My name is Debbie Ramsey. I was a student in high school. I'm a classmate of Mayor McKinney in the 873. I have a best interest inside, you'll see some of you from the feed store, I use feed bars, and then my grandfather's feed store for almost 20 years. What I'm here tonight for is though, April is Donate Life Month for the National Donate Life Month. What does that mean? It means that when you, we oft have to die, but when you die, would you like to live on? You can. You can by becoming an organ donor. I know that you've seen a lot of things on TV and different types of people speaking on it and the advertisements about donating life. Well, what you're looking at now is someone who benefited from someone saying yes at that time in their life when a loved one passed. Forty years ago, I had kidney transplant, and I'm here today with the same transplant. I am very active. I've got, I watch my children graduate from high school, kindergarten, college. My son got married in November at 45-years-old, and we adopted twins along the way. So we've been very active in our lives. The state of Illinois, Secretary of State Alexi Genoias, of course, is a very big advocate for organ donation, and I'm here on his behalf and the National Kidney Foundation of Illinois. I represent them in different ways going around. Just telling my story, just last week, I was in Washington DC, got into some old statters because the representatives and the senators, it was off session. But we're trying to get more advocacy in Congress and representation because there are different things that we'd like to address. For example, education. I'm here for that reason too. We may be a small group here, but it's important to every one of you. Your kidneys are very important to you, and if you feel great, everything you don't know, 37 million people have kidney disease in our nation, and some of them don't even know it. And it progresses until they need dialysis or they need a transplant. With me, I was three-years-old. They found out that I had some kind of a kidney issue and took me to the doctor, and ever since I was three, I've been followed very closely by doctors to monitor my kidney disease. At 26, my kidneys failed, but at 29, I had a transplant. I had a second chance at life. And all I'm asking you today is consider it, talk about it. You know, you just don't, you may not know when you might need a transplant. It's not just kidneys, of course. There are so many different, 25 people can be helped by one donor, and that's with tissue. When my brother passed away, we gave all, anything they could use, even though he had a kidney transplant too. But they took his skin, they took his cornea so that someone could see. There's so many other things that you don't realize can be used after you're gone. And so I'm just here to get, let you know, this is Donate Life Month, and for you to please consider it in your future with your family, and just make sure that you give it some serious thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Oh. I'm going to get up there.
Virgil Bates? Good evening.
I don't know if this is the right time to address this, but I was, I want to ask a few questions about why are we paying dog catchers around here? Because I got bit by a dog in August, and I had to go through four series of shots. They never came to pick the dog up because the dog was next door to me. The dog catcher came, but he didn't take the dog in, and I went and got the rabies shots, and two days after that, the hospital called me and told me that I needed to go back and change my antibiotics because what, the shots that they gave me, the antibiotics they gave me was not going to work. So I got over $20,000 rabies shots, and they never came to get the dog. So this is the reason I had to go through all the shots because the dog was not taken in for quarantine to see actually what the dog had. So I'm just wondering, why do we have a dog catcher when they don't take a vicious dog away, which I was on the public sidewalk next door to my house when I got bit?
As I said before, we won't, this is not the venue which to answer questions, but if you want to talk to our police department handles dog bites and loose dogs, you can talk to them after the meeting.
Okay. I have one more issue.
Okay.
I don't know if the city of Zion documented that I fell in a sinkhole about four months ago in the alley, the alley gateway.
Okay.
It wasn't a sinkhole, it's just I guess the water main busted. Coming through the alley, and my whole truck dropped down in this hole, probably about three feet of my plow stopped if we were going down. So I don't know if you guys was notified of that. But I've been going to, to the doctor because they put me at a dead stop. So now I've got to go see if it broke some skeletonous in my spine and in my back, because I just had a spine surgery and neck surgery. So I just wanted to bring, make y'all aware of that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Lynda Bates, Lynda Gibbs-Bates?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I am Lynda Gibbs-Bates, and following up, my husband brought up about the dog bite. He said I have to talk to the chief of police or someone afterwards. I talked with Gina Roberts, and she contacted the chief of police. Chief of police was supposed to get back to either one of us, which never happened. So my question is, what is going on here? First of all, why didn't the animal control come out to begin with? We went back and forth, they said it was Lake County that's supposed to come out and take care of that. Lake County said it was Zion. It was a back and forth issue with this. And I came to find out that Zion does not even have a contract with Lake County for animal control. Zion's animal control was the one that should have carried off and followed up without the dog, which never happened. And it just went on, and it seems like it's just going to swivel up under the rug, and I want to know why, as a taxpayer. Virgil's parents, my parents, we're taxpayers. So what is going on? And as I said, the chief of police never got back to me, he never got back to me. And as for the truck, my question is, does anybody go around and check the streets, the alleys, for deterioration, or how did this even happen? That the alley just came in? We had a main water break right outside of our house. Water was everywhere. Virgil had to go move one of his vehicles, otherwise it would have froze over. So since we're paying this high tax for property and also a high water bill, doesn't anybody check water break breaks? Now, my husband has to have a MRI, CT scan, he has to go and Thursday because of all of this that happened. He's been to the doctor, the doctor said that this needs to be brought to the attention of somebody. So something needs to be done. I don't know who's going to do, where it's going to stop, but something needs to be done, as a taxpayer of Zion on the road. So we said somebody can answer our questions afterward. Maybe we can get some answers now, because I tried, I've gone full circle with the commissioner. Chief of police didn't get back to me, so maybe somebody can answer some questions now. And as my husband said, he said he had four series. When it happened, blood was just pouring out of his leg. He had to go to the emergency, and it seems nobody seems to do anything about it. And I'm going to take it a little further back. My father was there, George Gibbs. Police officer came to our house about a dog. Said that the dog was dead. Somebody called and said the dog, the dog was nowhere to be. Police officer said that there was a chicken dog. Like I said, if there was a chicken dog, she couldn't find the dog. Went out there with my father's property, looking for a dog that was not there, and he came up here and raised sand with police department. So if that can happen, why can't a pit bull be picked up that bit my husband? And furthermore, that dog took bit me, he could have bit you, he could have bit a child. Then what would have happened? And nobody did anything. Now the dog, dog was gone, the dog was gone. So again, what is going on here? I really would like to know.
Well, after the, if you want to talk with our Public Works Director, Ray Roberts, about alleyways and how we fix water main breaks, we've had a lot of water main breaks, you can talk to him after the meeting.
Okay.
All right.
Well, is it going to help us to help anything? Not only for, not only for-
You'll get informed as to what we're doing in terms of your questions about what we do about water main breaks and also fixing them.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, because again, this could happen to you, it could happen to you, one of your family members, it could happen to anybody. So I'm just, so you know.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Good evening. Last month, I asked several questions about the toll contract, and I was hoping someone would provide answers, and someone did. Mr. Whitmore called me to discuss my comments. We had a lovely conversation about business costs, inflation, and the dangers a toll drive faces. I want to be perfectly clear, I'm not trying to set prices. To the contrary, you set prices when you go out for bids. The point I'd like to make is that toll bills don't match the contract, or else what's the point of having a contract? And there shouldn't be extra fees, like a $20 gas surcharge or a miscellaneous fee. And this can all be achieved by negotiating prices and bringing it to the council to approve. And I understand that prices do change, that we have inflation. I'm not, I'm not bothered by that. Mr. Whitmore brought up some interesting points, though, during our conversation. Our police cars are now equipped with license plate readers, and it's possible for officers to pull someone over if the plate shows fast passes. And Mr. Whitmore also told me that it's possible to pick up an impounded car on Saturday, but in that circumstance, he would have to charge a $350 administrative fee on behalf of the city. He informed me that my friend was uninsured and driving with expired tags. According to public records, the charges were dropped, which is to be expected when you have insurance and you pay for your tags. I can't explain this discrepancy. I do have the following questions. What are the policies requiring a car to be impounded, as opposed to having a member come pick it up? What are the policies governing the use of license plate readers? Are officers pulling over cars because of prior citations against a driver? And why do you charge a $350 administrative fee for picking up a car during that city business hours? I really would appreciate some answers, and I think Department of Judiciary would be a fine place for you. So thank you.
Thank you. Item number six is consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of regular meeting held on March 4, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Approval but not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held on March 4, 2025 at 7:50 PM.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by McDowell and second by Fryerson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries.
Bills voucher 148093 through 148745 drawn on Huntington National Bank, total $1,197,241.60.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
All move to approve the bills.
Second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion by Fisher, second by Stackhouse. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries. Item number seven, consider passing resolutions as follows. Item 7A, maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code for utilization of MFT funds for general maintenance programs per Director Roberts.
Mr. Chair, attached is required resolution by IDOP for utilization of motor fuel tax loans for the general maintenance program. Maintenance operations included on salt, with state junk purchase, HCM patching, and traffic signal maintenance. The estimated cost of the general maintenance operation is $348,000, and is a budget that I have to spend in fiscal year 26 MFT fund. Staff request and recommend approving the appropriate amendments to fiscal year 26 MFT street and bridge budgets, and approval of the IDOP resolution for the general maintenance operations.
All right, is there a motion? Motion by Stackhouse?
Second.
Second by Fisher. Questions or comments from any of the commissioners? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries. Item 7B, correcting a scribbler's error in a resolution approving a development plan, planned unit development for start early for property located between Zion Central Middle School and Shiloh Park Middle School per city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, lady and gentlemen of the city council. There was a small error with regards to the effective date in the sunset provisions with regards to the PUD for the aforesaid property. This is just cleaning up that error.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Fryerson?
Second.
Second by Stackhouse. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries. Item number eight, consider passing ordinance as follows. Item 8A, authorizing Marsh and McLennan Agency LLC to provide insurance brokerage services and renew certain insurance policies, medical, dental, life, and voluntary options per administrator name.
Thank you, mayor commissioners. Our annual insurance renewal went up market. The current policy expires April 30 of 2025. You have all of the renewals and results in front of you for who decided to quote, who Unfortunately, health insurance remains a huge cost for not just the city, but businesses and operations across the country. We had a relatively good renewal on our health insurance. It's odd to say, 7.28% increase is a good renewal, but we've seen industry trends of 10 to 15% sometimes in health insurance, so we're below that threshold. We already had dental insurance and life and vision insurance at rate guarantees until May of '26 and '28 respectively, so I would request or recommend renewal of the insurance policies as presented, health insurance with Blue Cross, dental with Guardian, life insurance with Blue Cross, which gives us an actual 1% reduction in the overall health package, and vision insurance and other voluntary benefits with the providers listed.
All right, is there a motion?
All move to approve.
Motion by Fisher, second by Stackhouse. Questions or comments from any of the commissioners? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries five to zip. Item number 8B, amending various sections of the Zion municipal code to eliminate the also-popular vehicle stickers in the city of Zion per administrator name.
Thank you again, mayor commissioners. At the last meeting, we talked about the pros and cons of vehicle stickers and kind of the antiquated procedure of collecting for them, especially when you consider cost benefit and declining numbers, and directive was given to come back with the code presenting, reflecting the elimination of that program. Current stickers expire April of this year. Thank you to everyone who had been diligent in asking when they go on sale again, but they will not be needed going forward with this passing. So I would recommend the amendment to the code reflecting the elimination of that requirement.
All right, is there a motion to amend the municipal code to eliminate the need for city stickers?
So moved.
Motion by McDowell and second by Fryerson. Any questions or comments from any of our commissioners? All right, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries five to zip. Item number 8C, authorizing and improving an intergovernmental agreement between Lake County Stormwater Management Commission and the city of Zion per Director Roberts.
Thank you again, sir. Staff is continuing to work with Berkins in there, and Lake County Stormwater Management Commission with the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for the proposed 20 district drainage improvement project Phase 1. Attached to Phase 1 IGA between the city of Zion and Lake County Stormwater Management, the agreement provides each entity's role and responsibilities, funding obligations, and project coordination. The proposed project is submitted in two phases. The grant funding maximum for each phase is $2,705,000, summer of this job. Although the project is funded by a grant from DECO, the city is responsible for all construction products, which will be reimbursed by Lake County SMC with the exception of a non-eligible water and sanitary improvement. The non-eligible improvements will be funded through the water fund. The attached spreadsheet provides the estimation of funding obligation for the city and the eligible reimbursement amount for Lake County Stormwater Management. The city will be required to pay the project expense match of $116,201 within 120 days of the agreement execution. Staff request and recommend approval of the bill of agreement between Lake County Stormwater Management Commission and the city of Zion.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the IGA?
You do. I enthusiastically approve this.
Second.
Motion by Fisher and second by Fryerson. Questions or comments from any of the commissioners?
When, when do we, when can we get the funding for Phase 2? When does that come out?
They are hoping that will be approved by the end of this year.
Okay.
And then we'll have to do another IGA, probably near, first part, right, on the sixth.
Okay.
And then we can move forward with that. This baggage here, hopefully, this is already approved, so once you guys approve this, then we can go forward with going out to bid.
And then we can start looking at dates to start-
For Phase 1 and the water and sewer-
Right.
-additions to those.
And we start moving dirt, hopefully-
Yes.
-within, maybe this year?
We're hoping, well, we're looking at possibly going out to bid by May.
Okay.
And the construction started within July, July 1.
Oh, excellent.
That's kind of the, the dart on the dartboard when trying to bid.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions, comments? All right, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries five to zip. Item number nine, discussion authorization approval. 9A, consider zoning dock at 25-Z-2 in ordinance requesting a zoning change from R10 to R8 as petitioned by Rochelle Reed for property per Director Iason. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval.
Thank you, your honor. Ms. Reed is seeking a zoning change from R10 to R8 to the property located at Link 17 West 17th Street. In 2004, this property was abandoned from the city under R10 zoning. 2005, the house was built on the property under zoning of 8, but the zoning was never changed from R10. Staff recommend to approve the zoning change beneath the ball regulations of R8 zoning and to be consistent with the surrounding zoning area. At March 6, 2025, planning zoning action, and recommend to approve the zoning change.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Fryerson?
Second.
Second by Stackhouse. Questions or comments from any of the commissioners? All right, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries five to zip. Item 9B, consider zoning dock at 25-Z-3 in ordinance requesting to consolidate the parcels located at-
the parcels located at 1809, 1811, 1813, 1815, 1817, 1819, 1821, 1823, 1825, and 1827 Lewis Avenue into one lot as petitioned by Shelley McKinney Swanson per Director Ianson. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ms. Swanson seeking consolidation of parcels located at 1809, 1811, 1813, 1817, 1819, 1821, 1823, and 1827 Lewis Avenue to be one lot for the purposes of. She has granted a special use permit to operate a daycare center in the condition that she consolidates her assets. At the March 6, 2025, 2025 position, recommend to fully comply with consolidation.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Fryerson?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments?
I do have a question. Are these currently empty lots?
Yes, they're all.
So she's going to build, she's going to construct a facility from the ground up?
Yes.
So that'll come next?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I'm correct, that's the property that's adjacent to the drive-in, the ice cream drive-in?
Yeah, just up.
Okay. That's good, those have been sitting there for quite a while. Okay, any more questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries five to zip. Item number nineC, consider approval of quote from Digicom Installations, Inc. for purchase and installation of a new station alerting system per Chief Streay.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. I'm requesting approval of the attached sales quote for the purchase and installation of a new station alerting system by Digicom Installations, Incorporated, to the amount of $52,345 in ancients. Funding for this project is from our dispatch Jet Speed slash E901 Fund, which is in process of being phased out as a transition to LakeCom for our fire and police dispatch and telecommunication needs. This purchase and installation is for upgrading Station One, and Station Two will be handled in conjunction with the building project that is currently ongoing. I also request the city council waive the bid process and recognize this as a single source vendor of this specialized technology equipment, and furthermore, it is funded in full by E901 Funds and has no budget impact.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the quote from Digicom Installations?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by McDowell.
Second.
Second by Stackhouse. Questions or comments from any of the commissioners? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries. Item number nineD, consider approval of maintenance agreement for generators located at Fire Station One, Fire Station Two, and the ESDA Center per Chief Streay.
Thank you again, Mayor Commissioners. Attached is a maintenance agreement for generators located at Fire Station One, Two, and the SCA Center. Service and ongoing preventative maintenance is very much needed on each unit, and Gen Serv has been recommended to continue providing generator service to City of Zion. I'm requesting and recommending approval of this agreement as presented. Total amount of the maintenance agreement for all three generators is $2,775 and is included in each apartment's building and grounds budget.
All right, is there a motion to approve the maintenance agreement for the generators?
So moved.
Motion by McDowell. Second by Stackhouse. Madam Clerk, we have any questions or comments from any of the commissioners before the roll is called?
No.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries five to zip. Item number nineD, we have consider appointments for boards and commissions for Mayor McKinney. As we know, that some of these terms will expire coming up in April, so for the Accident Review Board, our commissions will be Lieutenant Derek Zalodek, Chris Conway, and Officer Peter Jamka. That's for the Accident Review Board. For the Electrical Commission, it'd be Rich Ianson, Merlin Kreis, Christ, Justin Streay, Dave Gere, Pat Buchanan, and John Hooker will comprise the Electrical Commission. For Fire and Police Commission, Debbie Lewis will continue to be with us. For Liquor Control Commission, Chris Schamansky, reappointed, and William Worthington, a new appointee, will be joining us to be on the Liquor Control Commission. For Planning and Zoning Commission, Gerald Riley, who's done a great job as the president of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Desiree Johnson and Dr. Jennifer Smith will also join us. She is a graduate of ZBLA.
She is.
For the Police Pension Board, Marion Carlton. For the Special Events Commission, Christine Workman, Samaya Charity, and Chris Cubic. And for the TIF Review Board, Colette Davis, Chris Schamansky, and Cynthia Moreno. Those will be the boards and commissioner appointees for 2025. Is there a motion?
Make the motion.
Motion by Fryerson?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries five to zip. Item number 10 is Departmental Commentary. Director Ianson?
Thank you, Your Honor. We're just going to mention tonight, we're still taking applications for a seasonal grass cutter. We have a 16-year age cut and 18-year supervisor, so if you know the kids are interested in applying, you can look on the little bit.
And they can apply on our city website?
On the city website, you're first.
All right, through the Building Department, and they did a really good job of keeping the city in line and looking good in some of the vacant properties that we have in town. All right, Director Roberts?
Thank you, sir. I have two items tonight. First one is yard waste. Just like to remind all residents that it started today, April 1st. We would ask that anybody with the piles of leaves that are still on the right of way to bag those, and the contractor will pick those up through the bagged yard waste system. Fair item I have is the Union Pacific Railroad is going to be closing Child Boulevard. The closure is scheduled for Monday, 4, April 14th at 9:00 a.m. till Tuesday, April 22nd at 5:00 p.m. We will post the detour, which would be down to 27th Street, down to Glora, back around for that period. But that we posted that detour and the closure we posted on the website.
All right, Director Roberts, just one quick question. The Bates family asked about main breaks in the city and how we go about detecting the main breaks and maintaining the road, so can you give us just a little information to provide them with information with the amount of main breaks that we've had with our aging infrastructure and how we deal with it?
Well, so far since November of last year, up to date, we're sitting around 46, 47 main breaks, which is a high number. We have a very aging system. My little giggle there actually about predicting it, if I could predict it, I'd be a great man. We have no idea where these breaks happened, but we respond as soon as we acknowledge that these breaks have happened, and we repair them quickly and as best that we can. I believe the Superintendent of Operations did talk to your husband that night with the truck, took ransom, which provided to you that how we handle any damage or anything has to be contacted through the Finance Department and the insurance, that does not go through us. We can't, we don't recommend or not recommend payment of any damages, we're just there to fix it. As far as potholes in the alleys, we continually go around, all year round, noting where these potholes are at, and we either try and repair them in the house. Coming up as part of this maintenance package I have approved tonight is what a contractor did to do large patches on it. During the winter time, we try and patch those or the deeper potholes, it's with a temporary patch, which comes right back out when we end up following. So the patch plants have not opened yet, so they don't typically open. That's asphalt, pot makes asphalt, that repairs the pothole permanently, a lot better than a temp patch, though. That should open up around May 15th, and then we'll see crews out there systematically go through the alleys, and we start off with all the primary roads first, and then we'll do the secondaries, and then alleys are third on the list to start getting. Typically, we'll get into the alley patching end of July, August timeframe. Depends on how bad, off through my potholes that are out there. Hopefully answered your question.
I do have a question, but I may ask you.
Yep.
Why is infrastructure so old and dreary, and why are you just patching it? Why isn't it being perfected?
As far as the water main itself?
Well, I'm pretty sure you can.
Well, it's the repair costs, just to do, let's just say, a typical block, 600 feet, it costs around $350 to $400 per foot to repair that water main. So then it also includes having to repair the road, too. So a typical block can cost you real close to around 70 to $100,000. I know I have enough taxes, I understand you set taxes.
Yes.
But if we wanted to pay, if you go to church and you taxes, then how much would it cost us to replace the water main on every street we now take in here? You're probably talking, I did a chart, not doing it well, I'm going to do this off the memory, but right now, currently, we're saving about, I want to say about 28 miles, we have 116 miles of water main, 28 miles of that water main for place in 1926. To repair all that water main, just with that 28 miles will cost 56 million dollars. By the time we get that repaired, your next set that's sitting around 70 to 80 years old will now be 100 years old, and you're looking at another 40 million dollars to replace all this water main. Now, we're doing as well as we can, and the patching works, and it keeps the water flowing very well. And that's what our intent is, is we keep providing a high quality amount of water and release them on a debt note for it. That's why you're sitting in the shower, my water main breaks down here.
Well, that has happened to me.
I know, I said that. I've had phone calls, but I can't predict it, I can only fix it.
Okay, you have a few more questions?
Yes.
Because this was not a pothole, though.
I know, it was a sinkhole.
When I threw the coffee, the asphalt made in.
Yes.
Yeah.
That was because of the water underneath was breaking through.
Yeah, I know, I seen the water in the yard over there.
Right. That's why that formed.
Just let you know.
I think the crew was on site, though, at that patch.
I called him, I called him right away.
Well, no, I mean, we had a crew out there when you went in.
Crew came, we got my truck, I was going to go after them. I called Vic, what happened?
Right, right. And he talked to you, right?
Yeah, he talked to me.
Did he give you the numbers to call?
No.
Okay. He did call the Finance Department, they will give you the insurance numbers of where your insurance being contacted, the city will just stop and assess us, pay for the amount of bills, pay for the damage.
See, that's what I didn't get. I just lifted my car.
I know we helped get you the bill.
Yeah, yeah.
Could you give us the number of the finance, please? Finance, please?
You have? Because I don't have it on memory.
I can give it to you right now, or I can write it down for you.
Write it.
I'll write.
Okay, thank you.
Last question for you, Director Robert. Since the topic of taxes was brought up, and we hear that quite a bit, could you talk about how much money we've used in grant money to be able to repair roads and to collect that cost away from taxpayers?
You don't have that paper I gave you, did you?
I do have it, but I want to, I'm trying to go from memory, and as you remind me...
From my last memory, about since 2015, we have provided our local tax money, 1.8 million in repairing $18 million worth of grants. Of that was only 1.8 million of taxpayer, local taxpayer, to repair 18 million dollars of road, that was difficult to do since 2015. We are constantly seeking out and looking at grants, federal funding, opportunities to open other entities to be able to pay for our road repair, because on top of just the local money, I would not be able to even keep up.
And this is an issue that is happening, if I may add, through every municipality in trying to get funding from the federal government to help with road repairs. The cities, the municipalities can't afford it. I want to say Director Nabel, Administrator Nabel is out right now, but I think for us to do total repairs on all of the streets here in Zion would cost close to $100 million. So we are trying to, as a city, to make sure that we try to minimize costs to our residents, and when you talk about taxes, I don't know if you realize that one of the biggest things that's happened over the last couple of years here is that we received some money from the state government and for the spent fuel rods on the lakefront that should start taking place next year where your property taxes in Zion will go down between 5 and 20% depending on the area. So we are very mindful about the property taxes that people pay. It's been one of the issues that we've been working on, subjects we've been working on for the last 10 years here, to try to get money for the spent fuel rods when the nuclear plant shuttered, and we found a way to do it and able to help our residents by getting their taxes lower. That was a city initiative that we took on because we were listening to our residents talk about the high cost of property taxes. And if you look at your property tax bill, you'll see how it's divided. The city, you pay 15% of your taxes, probably roughly 15% of the city, to the city. The large portion of it, 77% of it, I believe, goes to the school districts. So we have to work on a very limited budget, which is why we continue to fight and go for grants to try to minimize the cost to our taxpayers. So thank you for the question, and I think it's one of the things that we've been trying to educate our residents on over the last several years about the cost of repairs, and it's happening everywhere. If you go to Kenosha, Waukegan, North Chicago, Zion, we're all dealing with the same issues of trying to repair roadways, and I think we are one of the few municipalities in the area that even attempts to deal with repairing alleys. And it's one of the reasons the garbage can system was moved from the alleys to the streets because the garbage trucks were making the alleys deteriorate at a much faster pace because of the weight that they carry. So we're mindful about the things that are happening here in town in terms of what are concerns of our residents, and we're trying to address them economically feasibly as we can. So thank you for bringing those issues up. Chief Streay?
Good evening again, Mayor Commissioners. So over the weekend, we were called twice for possible house fires. Luckily, one of them turned out to be a car that was burning, another one turned out to be a pile of leaves, and somebody's back there. So we were happy houses weren't burning, but that does bring up the point of yard waste, and as Director Roberts brought up, yard waste pickup. Remember, the city doesn't permit burning of yard waste, so please be mindful of that. We certainly allow campfires, but it's a good recreational campfire, I know that the weather's starting to turn, but that just can't contain yard waste if that's, again, a safety hazard and a, you know, potential medical hazard for the smoke that it puts out. So just a friendly reminder that please take care of your yards and yard wastes carefully and legally.
All right, thank you, Chief Streay. Chief Streay. Chief Barnum.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. I can address some of the comments made by some of the attendees tonight. To the Bates family, we did, I did respond to Vina Roberts, I talk to her frequently, actually. We talked back and forth about the dog issue. That, and I'm coming to memory on this, this is back in August, if I remember, that owner was issued three citations for that dog by incident, and now I don't, I can't speak to Lake County. And now I don't, I can't speak to Lake County. We do have a contract with Lake County for animal related incidents. Although I can clarify, we don't have an animal control officer here. So maybe there's some confusion on what our role can be. We, through the Department of Agriculture, are not permitted to have a pound in the sense of like a normal holding facility. And so we don't have an animal control. We have CSOs that work in that capacity or try to at least. And I know there were a number of tickets issued in that case. So I can talk to you further after the fact if you'd like. But to the other comment that was made about the tow contract, last minute, you mentioned that your concern, this traffic stop stemmed from a DWH incident or DWH issue. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I can assume that you meant driving while Hispanic. And the Hispanic officer that stopped that vehicle cannot tell who's in the car while we're driving in front of him. We do have license plate reader in some of our cars. And oftentimes, the license plate readers will read the plate in front of them or the officer will type it in and run the plate through their MTC. In this particular case, I did look into it because your concern or your statement was concerning to me. As you indicated, you were worried that our officers are working with ICE agents and working to deport people, as you were alluding to. So that doesn't happen. We follow the Voices Act and the Trust Act set forth by the State of Illinois. But because I did look into your concerns, that particular incident, the plates were suspended. That vehicle was not operational, permitted to be operational on the road, period. Regardless of an insurance issue or not, those plates were invalid according to the Secretary of State at that time. Additionally, if that person doesn't carry insurance on them or in their vehicle, that was also a ticket or citation issued. In the event that that comes to be where that person can obtain it or they have it and they can prove it, then oftentimes, a magistrate would eliminate that ticket, that citation. Regarding the tow fees, that is a, Rogers Towing is an independent business. I don't get a copy of invoices that they issue or get from individuals or for tow that they might have. So I can't speak to what was, I don't know. I don't know what he charged in that case. There's no way I would. As far as the admin fee, the admin fee is a city of Zion ordinance pertaining to violations of certain law. And one of those is operating a vehicle without proper registration. There may be others that would include potential certain arrests or things like that, but that's how that goes. So when the vehicle is used in certain instances of violations of certain law, that an admin fee will. So that may be what you're speaking of, but that's not a Rogers Towing component.
He said he was collecting it on behalf of the city.
Correct. He does that because we have to ensure that, he's the one that holds the vehicle. We don't hold him. He has him on his tow lot. So he collects it on our behalf and then sometimes. And then because we do that so that the tow fee is paid, the admin fee is paid in one location so that we don't inconvenience an individual so that they have to come to the city or the police department and then go over there. And they can do it all in one location and make all those payments in one spot and then he remits from there.
I don't think they might make it convenient if it didn't cost them $350.
It would still cost them $350, whether they pay it at the city or whether they pay it at Rogers. Rogers collects that fee on our behalf and then he remits it to us based on, the fee is imparted based on certain violations of IBC or law from a. That's a city ordinance. That's not a Rogers Towing fee.
Oh, I understand, I understand that.
So that's applied for certain violations, one of which is improper or illegal registration or suspended registration or something to that. Does that answer your question or would you like to talk further?
It does answer my question, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that's all I have for the moment.
All right. Thank you. Chief Barnum? Administrator Naval?
Thank you, Mayor Fishers. I know we've talked streets a lot tonight. I did a pretty in-depth series on public works costs in my dollars and cents stuff. I did one on property taxes and also one on public works. And some shocking numbers during that. And we've talked a bit about it, but the typical residential tax bill, what goes to the city is roughly 750 to $1,000 a year that we collect. That's our share of that. And it would take roughly 930 years if we put 100% of those taxes to replace a street in front of a resident. So luckily, you share that with other houses on the block, so that breaks that number down to about 75. So if we applied 100% of the taxes that we collect from a residence, it would take 75 years to have enough funds to pay for the street that's in front of your house. Unfortunately, that street would then be 75 years old and we'd have to replace it again. But out of that, we also have to fund police, fire services, other city services. So 100% does not go to that, which is why it's, it's still our responsibility to maintain these and take care of these. But that's why grants and items like the one approved earlier are so important to us. Because again, you may have talked about the spreadsheet that you had of the cost. But we're getting, in the past five, six, seven years, we're getting a 10x return on the dollars that we spend in the form of grants. If we spend a million dollars, we have, we use that for matching on federal and state grants and more fuel tax dollars to get 10 million dollars worth of projects done. And we've had to do that to be, in other ways, we've had to do full depth reclamation processes, which we were a leader on, to stretch that dollar to get a lot more done to still try and maintain those. But we hear high taxes a lot. We say, here, I pay taxes, but there is no perceivable way to have taxes nor we want them to cover the cost of infrastructure nowadays. So we look at each street, each water main, we look at the priorities and we try and do as much as we can. But a lot of times, it's through patching or when a main breaks, we have to respond to that. But there's no way to have the taxes that the city collects from that tax bill come even close to covering all of the services and the infrastructure that we have. And it's not just a Zion problem. This is a property tax and funding problem across the country right now, which is why you're hearing so much aging infrastructure be a problem across the board. It's a challenge we have. You know, we talk about pensions and things like that. But what scares me is the 100 million dollar liability of aging infrastructure that's on our streets and buried in the ground. That's the real unfunded liability, that something's gonna have to change in the long term. But until then, we will keep reaching for that rabbit out of the hat to stretch the dollars and make sure that the services are still there and functional for everyone. So that's just, I mean, that's a big picture approach. But it's shocking when you look at the numbers of these services that residents keep on an annual basis for that 750 dollars. That's my piece.
All right. Thank you, Administrator Naval.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you, David, for that explanation. And it seems to me that actually the 100-year-old water mains are holding up a lot better than the 40-year-old water mains.
They are.
So we're not so worried about the 100-year-old stuff. Still in good shape. So as you know, we're coming up on one of the most significant Christian holidays, Palm Sunday, Easter. And in between those two is Good Friday. And typically, the Zion Veteran Ministry Association on Good Friday hosts a community Good Friday service. This year, we're gonna be hosting it at a new church in town, Nueva Vida. This is the former Lakeview Church on Sheridan Road. Pastor Juan Carlos and his congregation are gonna be hosting us. And it will be a bilingual service on Good Friday, which is April 18th at 7:00 p.m. And the whole community is invited to attend.
And the name of that church again?
Nueva Vida.
New Life.
Yeah.
In Espanol. Can you habla Espanol? Anyway. Thank you. Gracias. Commissioner McDowell?
Not a lot tonight. Just thank you to the department heads for the thoughtful responses. I know we've, you know, been talking for a while about making sure that we're addressing things in public commentary. So I just want to go on record and say thank you guys and keep up the great work.
All right. Commissioner Stackhouse?
I'm just gonna echo Commissioner Pryerson and say thank you also to the department heads and the city assigned to the great work that you're doing. Appreciate you.
Commissioner Fisher?
Just, today was election day, so hopefully everybody got out and voted. So, you know, this is your government at work right here. So we invite everyone to watch the meetings on YouTube. They are posted by the city. And if you can, we'd love to see you come down here in person so find out what's going on. Sometimes it is boring as all get out, but this is the business of your tax dollars at work. So we do appreciate it when you come here and just watch the proceedings. Thank you all much for coming out tonight.
Yeah, my comments will be relatively brief, thanking the department heads, but also thanking Kathy Champagne and the Bates for coming out and for sharing your concerns. And one of the things that we've done over the last several years is we've had quarterly meetings with our residents in different spots so that people can come and ask the questions that you're asking tonight. And so that when there's an issue, that you know who to talk to. A lot of times, because I've grown up here, Virgil, we grew up right down the street from one another, I get all the calls. And we have our department heads, each of them talk tonight when there's an issue with the streets, it's Director Roberts. If there's a building issue, it's Director Iyantin. Of course, police and fire. And anything that has to do with the council finance, our director of finance is not here, Chris Conway tonight. But there are people that you reach out to. And one of the things that I have learned since being on the council for the last 10 years now is that people don't always know who to call. And what we try to do is if I get a call, I try to direct them to the right person to talk to to help address the issue. And sometimes it takes a while to address these issues. We get calls and it's not that your calls aren't important. When you talk about dog bites, that's more of a, an issue with the neighbor. A civil matter and not a sitting matter. And I think we do have an issue with dogs owners letting their pets run the streets. I have a dog and my dog is leashed. And people need to know that when they have pets, they have a responsibility to control those animals. They should be, it's a city requirement that they be on leash and walked on leash. It's also a violation if you don't clean up after your pet. But yet, as I walk my dog throughout the city, I see a lot of people that don't seem to be aware of that or they just don't care. And that's where it takes people in the neighborhoods to take control of your neighborhood. You don't have to have a neighborhood watch, but you know who's doing what in your areas. And if someone's violating that kind of law, you can have a talk with them or you can call the police department. Most people, when you confront them about cleaning up after their pet, they get very confrontational about it. So instead of doing that, if I know where they live, I just call the police, let them deal with it. But you are part of the fabric of what makes this council function. If we don't know that there are issues, when you come to us with issues, when you come to us, you see, you'll get the answers. We don't duck any of the tough topics that we get asked. We're not trying to sugarcoat things. We'll help and direct you when we can, whenever we can. So thank you for coming and letting your voices be heard this evening. Other than that, it's April. And Ray, I was gonna say happy birthday to you today, but I'm gonna leave that one alone. And we'll go on to item number 11 with just announcements. Take ones to know ones. On April 8th, we have, at 6:00 p.m., we have an annual town meeting. At 6:00 p.m., again, on April 8th, we have an annual town meeting. On April 15th, at 6:00 p.m., there's a Zion Township Board meeting. And at 7:00 p.m., there's a Zion City Council meeting on April 15th. April 18th, the city offices are closed for the holiday. And I hate talking about May and hopefully good weather. On May 6th at 7:00 p.m., there will be a Zion City Council meeting. Moving on to item number 12 is closed session pursuant to 5 I L C S 120 slash 2 open meeting for the discussion of file pending and/or probable imminent litigation sale or purchase of real estate, collective bargaining, legal counsel and personnel. Here's a motion to go into closed session. So moved. Motion by McDowell.
Second.
Second by Fisher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Pryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Kinney?
Aye. Motion carries. There aren't any voting matters when we come out of closed session, so you don't have to stay here, but thank you for coming tonight.